Good evening. I call the school board meeting of the St. Lucy County Schools to order. This is our regular meeting and our final 2019-2020 budget hearing. Welcome to all of you. It is a joy to be here tonight, is it not? After a week ago, it was, it's really, really good to be here. And I want to begin the meeting by congratulating and thanking all of our staff, from Superintendent, who exerted superior leadership throughout the entire Hurricane Dorian ordeal, all of the team members. You all just did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. So, thank you from your board, and you deserve a hand. Thank you.[50.12][50.12](APPLAUSE). If you would now stand with me for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Kids at Hope pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the skills and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. The first is item 2.1, the proposed adoption of amendments to school board policy 7.11. Mr. Superintendent, we have your recommendation.
Recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to the school board policy number 7.11 as submitted.
Okay. We have the recommendation. Are there any from the public that wish to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, board members do I have a motion?
I motion it.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hensley with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now, we will enter the public hearing for the final millage rates and final budget for 2019-2020. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Michelle will make the presentation at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Gent. This is the final budget hearing. The tentative budget hearing was held on July 23rd. The information regarding the millage rates is exactly the same. There were no changes to millage rates, and the budgets changed slightly, so we will go through this fairly quickly while I still cover the required elements. At the end of the presentation, we will vote to approve final millage rates. After millage rates are approved, we will vote to approve the final budget and resolutions, all three resolutions at one time. This slide shows the proposed millage rates, shows the taxable value, millage and tax collection revenue estimates are at 100%. We budget at 96%. Last year, we collected 96.23%. The 3.874 is the required local effort, comes from the Department of Education in the form of the FEFP. The .748 is a supplemental operating millage. The 1.5 is the capital operating millage. The 1 mil is a voted operating millage that was voted on by referendum. The total is 7.122. The board does not have the authority to increase the millages that are set by legislature, and it is our maximum millage for the 1920 school year. This slide is the history of the millage rates. This slide shows the break between capital and operating and voted millages. Shows where the legislature demanded a shift. The capital outlay shifted from two mils in 2007 to 1.5 in 910. You'll see in 1920 where we have the 1 mil separated. That's the voted referendum. This is the impact on the average homeowner. We get this information from the property appraiser each year. The taxable value for an average homeowner in the county went up by approximately 8.88%, you can see the non-voted millage rate is going down, but we have an additional 1 mil that was voted. There's also an increase in taxable value. Therefore, you see an increase in total taxes of approximately $208.27 on the average homeowner with a $25,000 homestead exemption. This slide shows the trend in taxable value history. It's the entire county's gross taxable value that makes up the taxes. And this slide shows the tax collection history. For comparison purposes, on this slide, I, oh, sorry. On this slide, I excluded the 1 mil for 1920, and will show the effect of that on the next slide. It's interesting to note that on this slide, the increase in taxable value is increasing, but on this slide, prior to 1920, the tax collection history is not increasing at the same rate. Here's where you can see how the 1 mil affected our taxes. This chart is included just in case anyone says the school district's impact on taxpayers is too demanding. Looking back at '07-'08, we are collecting 184 million. Excluding the additional voted 1 mil, we would be proposed to collect 147 million, so we are down $37 million a year compared to that benchmark year. Cumulatively, 372 million in reduced tax burden to the property tax owners. And here is where it shows where we incorporated the 1 mil, the additional voted mil. The rollback rates discussion is something we are required to talk about. Here's a table that helps to explain it. In 1819, the taxable value was 23.1 million. The millage rate was 6.335. That generated 146.7 million dollars. The rollback rate is a calculated rate that will generate the same revenue using this year's taxable value. The rollback rate is 5.9689, so 5.968 times the current taxable value generates 146.7 million dollars. Since we have a proposed rate of 7.122 that exceeds the 5.9689, we have to compare those two and make a public statement that the proposed rate is 19.32% greater than the rollback rate. This is the budget. It includes beginning reserves, revenues, appropriations, and ending reserves. The grand total is 613,822,401, which is amended throughout the year by official board Does anyone want to address the board?
Public that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Superintendent, we will receive your recommendations.
Recommend the board approve the final required local effort millage of 3.874 mils as specified in Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final A.
Recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley and Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Recommend the board approve the final district's school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.748 mils as specified in Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final A.
Have the recommendations. Do I have a motion, board members?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson and Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Recommend the board approve the final discretionary local capital improvement millage of 1.500 mils as specified in Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final A.
Have the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll and Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Recommend the board approve the final district additional voted millage of 1.000 mils as specified in Resolution 2019-20 Final A.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mills and Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Recommend the board adopt the 2019-20 final budget in the amount of 613,822,401.
We have the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Mills and Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Recommend the board adopt Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final B, Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final C, and Resolution 2019-20 TRIM Final D.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Thank you, Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, at this point, we close the public hearing, and thank you again, Ms. Thomas, for job well done on that. We will now move to our special orders of business. And our first presentation is from the American Heart Association. Ms. Martin?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Gent. I'd like to invite Michelle Mason, who is the Youth Market Director for Brevard, Indian River, Osceola, and St. Lucy County, from the American Heart Association to make a short presentation.
All right, I'm tall, so I'm going to move the mic up a little bit so everyone can hear me. My name is Michelle Mason. I am the Youth Market Director. I cover four counties. As I shared, I told her to keep it a secret earlier, St. Lucy is quickly becoming my favorite county. I technically live in Brevard, so in the Space Coast area, but once a week, my lovely principals and volunteers get to see my face. I come in and bother them, as I say, to help further our mission of the American Heart Association, which is to build a healthier world full of, free of cardiovascular disease and stroke. I actually have the pleasure of partnering with many of the schools here in St. Lucy County. I wanted to give a quick snapshot, just to highlight and also thank the board and Superintendent Jen for his support. This past school year, I had the pleasure of partnering with 13 schools. So, if any of you have students in your, in schools locally, I'm sure many of you do, you've probably heard of Kids' Heart Challenge. That is also what is known as Jump Rope for Heart. So, we celebrated our 40th birthday this past year and made a few changes, one of them being the name Kids' Heart Challenge. Collectively, the schools raised over $37,000 for our mission, which is huge. $25,000 is the cost to fund a basic research grant. So, every year, with your continued support and the school's support, we are able to continue funding research grants as well as helping heart survivors, educating the public, et cetera. The schools this year collectively earned $1,750 in PE equipment gift certificates. So, as a give back to the schools, we do give them gift certificates to purchase PE equipment. And in addition, this year, we had over $1,000 in direct contributions as an additional thank you that we give to the schools. So, they're able to use that and supplement their budgets for whatever they see. We had approximately 10,466 students and their families receive heart healthy information. Many of the schools that I go to allow me to do a presentation, so I'm able to talk about the heart attack warning signs. We get to talk about having a healthy heart. We also get to talk about helping other people. We like to think of our program not in addition to being a fundraising program that supports the school and also the American Heart Association, but also a community service learning program because they're learning how to help others through the school. Additionally, my favorite part, 587 students out of the 13 schools took a heart healthy pledge online to be more physically active, to be kind to others, or to drink more water. So, this year, we're looking and we will work with our schools to boost that so that they can, we can have more students jumping online and taking that pledge. So, I like to take this opportunity, and Mrs. Martin and Mrs. Patrick were wonderful in allowing me to do this, but to recognize a few of our schools. This past last two years, I've learned that many of our schools are very competitive, and they actually like to know how other schools in the area are doing. Unfortunately, as we all know, we had a friend named Dorian that visited last week, so the plaques that I was going to have were not able to be finished. So, in lieu of those plaques for right now, I have a certificate, but I will be hand-delivering those plaques to you guys here soon. I am going to start from top down, but please, my volunteers that are here, please know that this is not a reflection of how I feel about you. This, I love all of you. I'm just going top down to recognize you all. So, the first one, it is our first school. Their actually first place is Village Green Environmental Studies. Coach Copeland, as I know him, which I told him I didn't recognize him in regular clothes, he, I always see him in PE, you know, uniform, did an amazing job this year, and they raised $6,812. That was approximately a $5,000 increase over the prior year.[863.43][863.43](APPLAUSE). You're welcome. Are we doing posters in between or no?
All together.
Okay. Do you want me to go up there now or later? Later. Okay. Sorry, I'll keep going. After that, I have grown to love this coach too, as I'm knocking things off. We have Floresta Elementary. So, Coach Swimmer and the team there, along with Ms. Lucky, they've been very supportive of us. His goal every year is to raise over $5,000, and this past year, he actually smashed that goal.
Yes, he did.
He was so excited this year to do that, so, go ahead. Oh, thank you. Thank you.[900.12][900.12](APPLAUSE). Last but not least, certainly not least, because as I said, I love all of them dearly, this does not reflect my feelings for them, is Oak Hammock. Coach Brannum is a person I work closely with, but as you can see, at many of the schools, it actually takes a team effort. And so, I know at Oak Hammock, they all work amazing together, and we are able to raise $5,269 this past year.[930.12][930.12](APPLAUSE). Want me in there? Okay.
Sure. And then, I'll just flip it over to your next slide.[935.12][935.12](APPLAUSE).
Not to be remiss, oh, we're good. Okay, we're good. Not to be remiss, the schools up on the screen, these are the schools that actually participated this year. So, while we only, I've only recognized the top three, each of them play a significant impact in furthering our mission and helping not only our students, but also our local community, and as well as the rest of the United States. I went to the wrong slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[961.23][961.23](APPLAUSE).
All right, we're going to jump right into our Star Awards. Our first recipient tonight is John Akers. I know he couldn't be here, so we have Mr. Prince that's going to be accepting. He's a bus driver that transports students between student perks sites. He was nominated by Lisa Kittsmiller. As many of you know, Students Perks is a coffee cart that is at the St. Lucy County Board of County Commissioners Building, as well as the Port St. Lucy City Hall. After driving students to the county and city buildings for a few weeks, Mr. Akers has become a huge part of the team and is helping with the enterprise to assist students even making coffee and supporting them throughout their journey. He's a tremendous asset to the team, and they're very happy that he's there to support them. So, congratulations.[1013.29][1013.29](APPLAUSE). Everybody together? Okay. All right, our next recipients were nominated by a parent, Annette Dorsey, and that's Dorothy Barron and Monica Webb. If you could come forward. Ms. Dorsey, in her letter, writes, "I've never written an unsolicited letter of praise for a job well done. However, Ms. Mona Webb and Ms. Dorothy Barron are two people who deserve to be recognized for their outstanding service. For the last four years, they have been driving my daughter to school every morning, and I've found them to be very loving, patient, kind, and sweet. They make her feel so safe when she's with them. They are angels sent by God. I know my daughter is in good hands, so I'd never have to worry." Thank you and congratulations.[1064.58][1064.58](APPLAUSE). Next, from our Human Resources Department, nominated by Dr. Rafael Sanchez, are Elizabeth Rivera and Myrna Jimenez.[1075.23][1075.23](APPLAUSE). Liz and Myrna handle all of the main calls that come into the school district. A situation recently occurred where they followed our district's see-something-say-something protocol, and they immediately notified school security. They implemented our safety and security initiatives impeccably and went above and beyond with how they handled the situation to make others feel involved safe. I believe their quick actions exemplify our mission statement of safe and caring schools, and they are an example of model behavior expected from our employees. Thank you and congratulations.[1111.01][1111.01](APPLAUSE). Next, we have four individuals, teachers and staff. We have four individuals from Alapata. We have Lisa Bowling, Ryan Zacharitz, Nicole Ansowitz, and Dorothy Jean Hambrik. These individuals were nominated by some parents, Kenny and Anisha Lassiter. And they write about Ms. Bowling. Ms. Bowling had their son Carson in her class. His parents want her recognized for her care, love, and compassion that she shows towards Carson. He recently gained his hearing by means of surgery, and she is crediting, she is crediting Ms. Bowling for helping him open up and dramatically improve his communication skills. Mr. Zacharitz had their son Kyle in his class last year, and they explained that he has developed a special bond with Kyle, who in turn was able to meet new heights with his academic success in both reading and science. Nicole Ansowitz is being recognized. She's always on top of everything. As a front desk clerk, she greets every person with a smile and has the answers to every question. Ms. Dorothy Jean Hambrik was nominated by a grandparent, and the grandparent explained how helpful and nice Ms. Hambrik was during open house. She noticed Ms. Hambrik referred to the students as "my students" and "my parents" as she sold T-shirts during the open house. It was evident that she has built long-lasting relationships with them, and this grandparent was so pleased to know that people like her are working in our schools. So, congratulations and thank you.[1224.01][1224.01](APPLAUSE). Thank you, that's it.
Okay, we will move now to our CTA report. Mr. Freeland called me earlier and said he had a prior commitment due to Hurricane Dorian coming through and rescheduling something, but he wanted me to express his appreciation for all that the district is doing. He said he would have nothing but good news to share were he here, so we'll look forward to him sharing that with us again next month. Anyone here from CWA? Okay, seeing none. Board members, we have our consent agenda before us. Let me note, please, that item 15.2 has been removed, so we will not be voting on that item. At this point though, thank you, Ms. Hensley, for accepting second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted, with the exception of item number 15.2, which is deleted.
Okay. Board members, we have the recommendation. At this point, are there any items you wish to pull for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, we have the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll and Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And we will then move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As was mentioned at the very beginning in the meeting, we got through the storm last week, and I just want to recognize, we recognize these folks this morning at our principals' meeting, but our shelter, school principals, Mona Ray Buchanan, Todd Smith, Joel Lazo, and Carrie Wallkevitz, and their teams and their staffs for manning the system. A lot of folks don't realize that we share the same concerns and anxieties as the general public, and our principals and staff members go out to support our community and protect our community, and so they did a wonderful job. Also, I want to thank our staff members, Terrence, Marty, Mr. Prince, Carolyn Rarick, Deborah Wiest, and John Gillette. John is on his, what was it, his 40th wedding anniversary honeymoon? Forty years, so he's on a honeymoon. We let him go for a week, and he's supposed to be back Monday. And I know I'm not supposed to say where everybody went.
Please don't.
But, Grand Canyon. Anyway, and so, in all seriousness, where's Marty? Marty spent three nights out at the EOC, and so, Jacunte was out there. Marty, as I told the folks, Marty got Jacunte, told him where, what was it, Carter's Grocery and the food there.
Chicken baskets.
So, they hung out there for a while. But anyway, our staff did a wonderful job, and we worked very well with the EOC and the county and the different agencies. It was probably as smooth as it's been, and hopefully, we won't do this again for a long time, but I just want to say publicly that our staff members did a fantastic job at our school centers, and we had about almost 700 folks in our, in our, the shelters. We have a campaign this year regarding attendance and school attendance, and September is Attendance Awareness Month. Every time a student's absent, they have an opportunity lost for learning, and this affects their student achievement, so we're doing a big, a big push this year for that. Our teachers play a key role, but everybody in the building does, from the principal to the front office to cafeteria workers. Everybody can teach attendance, and our slogan is "We Belong in School," so we're going to continue to do that. Lydia presented to the roundtable last week and to some of our partners out there as well. We have a good partnership with truancy, with the PSLPD, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I'm sorry, Boys and Girls Club has, and 18 of our schools has a truancy person that works in that school, and the data from when they make contact with families is phenomenal on repeat, on repeats. Hardly any. They're very successful. It's just a one-on-one where they work with the family, so we're going to continue to do that. And then, finally, this Saturday is the Big Brothers/Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake over at the Bowling Alley. I believe it starts at nine o'clock. September 25th is Dad's Take Your Child to School Day. And then, I saw Anna here, she probably bolted because she's worn out. The principals have been here all day, but I wanted to publicly thank her for allowing us to use her cafetorium and her building. Hopefully, we, this is our last board, not hopefully, Terrence, this is our last board meeting at Alapata Flats. Our next meeting on October the 8th will be at the school board, the new school board headquarters, and then, we will be setting up a date and time for ribbon cutting at the end of October, probably October, that first Tuesday, the 29th, I believe it is. And so, we'll be sending that information out. We were set back a little bit by the storm. We'll start having some offices move in later on this week, and we're looking forward to that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report?
No.
Thank you. Our school board members' reports. Ms. Hensley, we'll start with you.
Most things were disrupted, but our Children's Services Council, we had a hearing last Wednesday. Our final hearing is tomorrow. The budget is increased higher than it's been since 2009, which means that we can actually do some interesting things and help our agencies do more. They've been seeing cuts every year for years, and now that they're able to do a little bit of increase. Also, it came up at a meeting at the Transportation Planning Office at the LCB Committee regarding an appropriate bus stop for the new building. A citizen brought that up, and it was settled by the next morning. That's the cooperation that happens in this county, so that's fabulous. Thank you.
Ms. Hilson? Dr. Mills?
Just again, ditto with what the superintendent have said and our chairman, cheerwoman. Ms. Harley, we thank our staff for how diligent you were. I want to especially call out Marty Sanders' name in making sure that we receive timely reports and updates during the hurricane, threat of Hurricane Dory, and was very, very timely, Superintendent. Thank you for keeping us informed every moment of time on what we were doing as a district. Also, of course, we want to thank again all of the schools that were shelters, that prepared so well for people that needed to be evacuated. You were right on time with what you needed to do, so we thank you very much for that. Also, Ms. Rodriguez here at Alapata Flats, thank you for opening up your school to the school board, to the district here, and all of the other schools that have had departments in their school during the time of our challenging time of having to rebuild after previous threats of flooding with the other building. So, we're moving forward. School is open. Everybody's working hard, and we want to thank each of you in your several different places for the job that you do. Job well done.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. Again, just for the hurricane, just having two new principals, Lakewood Park and Central, and their first time was awesome, and they did a great job. As I drove around, also, we don't want to forget the sheriff's office and the county staff that were also manning the shelter. I want to especially call out Marty Sanders' name in making sure that we receive timely reports and updates during the hurricane, threat of Hurricane Dory, and was very, very timely, Superintendent. Thank you for keeping us informed every moment of time on what we were doing as a district. Also, of course, we want to thank again all of the schools that were shelters, that prepared so well for people that needed to be evacuated. You were right on time with what you needed to do, so we thank you very much for that. Also, Ms. Rodriguez here at Alapata Flats, thank you for opening up your school to the school board, to the district here, and all of the other schools that have had departments in their school during the time of our challenging time of having to rebuild after previous threats of flooding with the other building. So, we're moving forward. School is open, everybody's working hard, and we want to thank each of you in your several different places for the job that you do. Job well done.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. Again, just for the hurricane, just having two new principals, Lakewood Park in Central, and their first time was awesome, and they did a great job as I drove around. Also, we don't want to forget the sheriff's office and the county staff that were also manning the shelters. And just for, I'd hate for you to show up on Saturday, but it's next Saturday, September 21st is Bowl for Kids' Sake. I don't want you to be the only one there.
Practicing.
Practicing. I figured you would be.[1778.33][1778.33](LAUGHTER). You know, Campo Bowl's pretty good.
Doesn't matter.[1782.51][1782.51](LAUGHTER).
Okay. Well, again, thank you all for being here tonight. We have no unscheduled speakers to come before us and no further business to conduct, so we are adjourned.